To hear upon. Now we call upon Mr. Matthew Rowe. Mr. Matthew Rowe is a global leading expert in power system and energy storage, a principal consultant and currently the director of the DMV Asia-Pacific Power Grids Business. Prior to his current role, Matthew was the head of the Department for Energy Storage across Europe, the Middle East and Africa at DMV. Matthew is a chartered engineer and has published internationally recognized energy journals and often presents at academic and international industrial conferences around the world. Matthew has lead and worked on over 150 energy storage and power system projects globally with key industry stakeholders such as power system operators, regulators, government utilities, investors. Can we have Mr. Matthew Rowe? Please come, sir. Then we have Mrs. Preeti Bhattnagar. Mrs. Preeti Bhattnagar is an electrical engineer by profession and has been working in the BIS since more than 30 years. I would request all of you to please take the seats. She has worked in different activities of BIS which includes standard formulation, certification and training. The major part of her tenure in BIS was dedicated to the certification activity. She had been heading the Bhopal branch office which caters to the certification work on the state of Madhya Pradesh. She was posted in ETT in the initial period of her career and had handled technical committees right rotating machinery and power capacity. We welcome you ma'am. And the final, we have Dr. Winfried Damm. Dr. Winfried Damm graduated with FU Hagen, Germany, received an MBA from Michigan State University and a PhD from FU Berlin. He worked for two years as a consultant, four years for a member of national parliament in the energy sector and joined the municipal utility of Lipstick in 1992. There he had sales, marketing, PR, strategy, controlling and M&amp;A international department and was responsible for external relations among others. We welcome you sir. Now I hand over the mic to our chairman, Mr. Vikram Gandhutra, to take the session forward. So for the first, I would request Mr. Matthew Rowe to give his presentation.
Hello, my name is Dr. Matthew Rowe and I'm the director of DMV's Power Grids Business across Asia-Pacific. I won't, oh, I need to move the slides. Ah, so I won't introduce myself because someone's kindly done that already. But DMV, just to give you a bit of context, we're a technical advisory. We're 158 years old and employ about 12,000 people around the world. Primarily, we're known as a certification and risk management assurance and technical advisory business. We focus in the maritime sector but have about 4,000 people working in our energy advisory business. It's a very interesting company. It's set up as a foundation and 5% of all of the revenue of the company goes back into it, research and innovation, which we then use to ultimately help our customers and support the business. A lot of the work we do is around enabling a faster transition. It requires sort of system level thinking and deep and broad knowledge to allow us to be able to support the industry and customers moving forwards. I thought I'd start with this quote, I thought this was quite cool. This is a quote from Bill Gates that I heard last month. And he said, "Power transmission is key to our clean energy future. If we address the barriers standing in the way of that future, it will lead to lower emissions, cleaner air, more jobs, fewer blackouts, more energy and economic security and healthier communities." And it's really, I thought that was really impressive to see that Bill Gates really noticed how important our grids are and the investments that they need to go through. And every year, DMV publish our energy transition outlook, which is our view of the future out to 2050 in terms of how the energy system will evolve. And it's fair enough, being consultants, we sit in the middle of lots of different players and we often get asked to predict the future. And this is our prediction of what the future will look like. So in 2050, we expect to see a very different system than what we see today. 55,000 solar plants, 12,000 onshore wind farms is an example. And out to 2050, 70% of renewables will come from solar and wind. And you can see there's a significant shift from where we are today out to 2050. And the model we use to make these predictions is an hourly dispatch model that we take on the global scale and then we model regions on a more local level to apply the local policy and regulations to it. And it's very interesting, you can see that things like hydropower and gas will still feature as part of the energy mix, but there's a significant amount of renewables coming onto the system. And we've heard today about some of those numbers that we expect to see in India as well. But probably the biggest shift isn't necessarily the generation change, it's the amount of energy that we see going through the system. And even on a global level, we see that doubling out to 2050. And you can see this is the share of electricity and the final energy demand that is the top blue bar at the top. So our power grids around the world are changing. We see a significant growth in offshore wind coming on, which will require a massive expansion and more HVDC, HVAC and hybrid grids. We see more onshored renewables driving the electrification. Our networks are being operated closer to the limits than they were before. And it was very interesting, the last panel, I was saying to Madini that it's not very often I go to conferences all around the world and that we get to see a session on asset management. And it's really impressive that that's a focus of the conference and the experts that we have on the stage today. But ultimately, we'll see more data being collected and these grids needing to be operated closer to their operating limits and therefore more digitalization and standardization of the data that we use. World transmission lines will increase from just over 6 million circuit kilometers in 2019 to almost 12 million by 2050. And you can see there the breakdown by region in terms of how the amount of length and the amount of cables that we expect to see deployed across our networks. And the total investments will significantly increase as well. You can see here in this bar at the bottom, so this is annual investments across the y-axis and time across the x-axis. And you can see there's a dip in investments and that's been the impact of COVID as the investments in grids declined. But ultimately, we'll see them double over the next 10 years. So a significantly different infrastructure than we're operating today. And ultimately, accelerating innovation and digital transformation will be key to that. And actually, we predict that some 15% of grid investments tomorrow will go into digital infrastructure. We'll see more things around data storage, cybersecurity, sensor arrays and enhanced analytical algorithms with machine learning as one of the questions discussed in the earlier session. And ultimately, as we've set out today, asset management becomes a solution for utilities to improve their operations. Every year we publish, we go away and use our global networks to interview stakeholders around the world. And we pick a different topic to go away and take, to do these interviews on. And this year, we did the interviews on future-proofing our power grids. So we interviewed 400 experts around the world, 25% we aim for a quarter of those to be in the C-level of the organizations where we also do deeper level interviews. We represent, it represents about 25 countries and we also do these in-depth interviews with the C-suites to allow us to understand. I just wanted to show you a couple of the highlights in the last minute today. Ultimately, what the research shows is there's an urgent need for greater investment in our power grids. And in fact, 87% of the people that we interviewed told us this. This differs a fair amount by region, so you can see there that in Europe, the correspondence was up to about 90% and Asia-Pacific down to 75%. And that ultimately comes down to where the regions are with their energy transition and how they see that transition panning out. So yeah, so we see power grid investments needing to grow by 50% in the next 10 years to really meet our expectations within the energy transition. The report also sets out the investment priorities on the shorter term of the experts that we interviewed, showing that the integration of battery storage was the most important priority to lots of utilities, developers and investors within the power sector around the world. Commercial solar generation being number two and electric vehicles and considering the impact on the infrastructure and the grids on the system as well. So just to conclude, storage is essential, an essential part of our future energy mix. One of the biggest challenge we face actually is the fact that we turn off this spinning generation on the system. We lose that inertia within our system and we lose the inherent flexibility that we have through that generation to renewable assets where we have less control and less flexibility over. And we actually predict a significant amount of co-located storage coming on with solar. And we were already heard today that we expect to see more and more storage coming on our systems and tenders which have been set out in India as well. So though at the moment, we see a large uptake of standalone lithium ion batteries being used for system flexibility around the world, actually a significant amount of that will eventually be deployed with co-located storage. And actually, we predict that around 20% of electric vehicles on the grid will actually be used in vehicle-to-grid technology for providing flexibility services back to the grid. Yeah, last slide. The last thing I was gonna say is power grids cannot adequately connect all the renewable sources. And this was the biggest takeaway from the survey is that 76% of people came back and said that they see a real challenge in how we connect all of these renewables to our systems. So thank you very much and I'll pass it over to the moderator.
So I request Preeti to please make your presentation. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm from Bureau of Indian Standards. I'm sure everybody must be knowing about my organization. Just a little intro before I start with my, though I have very, very less time, I have been told I have to finish in five minutes. That is rushing through, but I'll still try to cover as much as possible. Bureau of Indian Standards is the national standards body of our country. It is engaged in standard formulation, conformity assessment, testing and training activities. And of course, the main activity is standard formulation and conformity assessment. So now with this small introduction, I'll begin with my presentation, which is basically on sustainable development goals and the electro-technical standards. As we all know, in September 2015, the United Nations published the Sustainable Development, 17 Sustainable Development Goals, that is the SDGs, with an aim to enhancing world peace and prosperity, eradicating poverty and hunger and protecting people and planet by 2030. It calls for innovation and broad collaboration between public and private society. Now, standardization and conformity assessment, they support economic development and global trade. It enables energy access and increases the safety and reliability of electrical and electronic goods. It also forms the basis of circular economy and environmentally conscious design. Indian standards, almost all, they contribute to almost all the 17 SDGs. They provide the foundation that allows industry to adopt or build sustainable technologies and best practices and they form the basis for innovation as well as quality and risk management. Now, under, as I said, the standard, this national BIS is involved in standard formulation activity. Under this activity, we have around 15 division councils which caters to standardization in different fields. An electro-technical division council, that is the ETTC, it is involved in the standardization in the field of electro-technology. It covers all the aspects, starting from generation, transmission, distribution, storage and utilization. And under these broad areas, it covers all the various fields which come under its purview. So these are the 17 Sustainable Development Goals, as I said, SDGs. Standards are linked to all these SDGs, embody global and conscious methodologies, process and specifications. So out of these 17, there are three SDGs which are directly linked to the field of electro-technology. The three are seven affordable and clean energy, industry innovation and infrastructure, and SDG 11, which is sustainable cities and communities. So coming to sustainable affordable and clean energy. Energy, especially electricity, it is the golden thread that impacts all the SDGs. United Nations has recognized energy as the cornerstone for economic development, facilitating poverty and hunger reduction, efforts improving healthcare, development, education and empowering women. Now, these are the committees which under ETTC, division under the electro-technical division council, we have 44 committees which are dealing with different areas of electro-technology, standardization in those areas. So these are the four technical committees which are directly linked with affordable and clean energy. The first one is ET28, solar photovoltaic energy systems, then wind turbines, ET42, ET50 is LVDC and ET52 is electrical storage system, energy storage systems. Coming to ET28. Now, this sectional committee has published IS14286 series of standards, which is on terrestrial photovoltaic PV modules, design qualification and type approval. This is aligned with the international standard IC61215 2016 series of standards. We have already, the IC has brought out the revision in 2021 and we are also in the process of adopting the latest standards. This lays down requirements for design qualification and type approval of terrestrial photovoltaic modules suitable for long-term operation in general open air conditions, climates. The standards are intended to apply to all the terrestrial flat plate modules such as crystalline silicon type as well as thin film modules. BIS has also published IS1621 series of standards and IS61730 series of standards on power converters in using PV systems and safety qualification of PV modules. Next is ET42, wind turbine sectional committee. Under this sectional committee, BIS has published IS6140 series of standards on design requirements to ensure that wind turbines are appropriately engineered against damage from hazards within the plant lifetime. Then LVDC power distribution systems, as we all know, that it is very difficult for electricity to reach in very remote areas of our country. We have certain terrestrial areas where it is very difficult for the grid to reach and the electricity to reach such homes. So in this case, BIS has a leading efforts to make LVDC technologies safe for use everywhere, where DC power can be used directly without losses in energy conversion. So under this sectional committee, BIS has published IS1671148 volt ELVDC distribution system guidelines. This standard covers the essential requirements for distribution of power from an extra low voltage, that is 48 volt DC power source. Considering safety and energy efficiency as foremost priorities, a primary DC voltage range that is sufficiently safe needs to be chosen since the standard is likely to serve needs of most communities that are first time users of electricity, the possibility of electric injuries should be minimized. Then we come to ETD52, which is Electrical Energy Storage System, sectional committee. Basically, it is involved in preparing that energy storage part, that is a BMS, and we have already brought out a standard, IS17092 on this. It has initiated the work of developing standard on battery management system for flow batteries as well as battery management system for EVs. Now, this is the general slide which gives the general, this thing, condition or the situation of our country. I'll go for it. Where energy is opportunity as it transforms life, economies and our planet. We're coming to the next SDG, this is Industry Innovation and Infrastructure. This is, Indian standards support the development and implementation of sustainable quality infrastructure in all industries where electrical and electronic devices and systems can be found. They provide confidence to regulators, buyers, consumers, that devices and systems are safe, can interoperate and are built to industry-wide agreed levels of quality and reliability. Two of our committees, they are connected to this, ET44 and ET51. So I'll just go fast. So these are the standards which are covered. Anyway, information is all available on our website also and in case you need any further information, you can even contact us.
We will share all the slides also. We will share all the slides with the participants.
Yeah, just the last one. This is the sustainable cities and communities. Sustainable cities and communities, we all know that it is directly concerned to the public people. These are some of the committees which are related to these, that is 13, that is smart meters, lamps and related illumination engineering. So all the standards, important standards which have been prepared by BIS have been listed under these. So I think I will, I'll close now. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, I'm very sorry. So now I would request Winfried, Dr. Damm, to please make his presentation.
Namaskar. I'm happy to show you some of the results in Germany and what is my draw for India. What you can see here are the targets for Germany. And the key message is, don't think about 2070 or 2050, break it down and then monitor it on a best annual basis, put it into a law and really monitor and follow up. And if a specific sector is not aligning to the specific target, make that sector to catch up. Set the main, I think, results from Germany. I think you're all aware, we're aiming at phasing out any carbon emissions and achieve neutrality by 2045, so it's in the next 22 years. When we're doing this target monitoring with specifically, we're quite good in the electricity market, we're quite bad in the transport sector. What we have achieved over the last 20, 30 years was really ramping up in renewables. But if you compare India and Germany, you can see, our first client, if I would have picked Germany in 1980, 1990, it would have looked quite similar, not as much hydro, but in regards to coal very significantly. And we're going to face out nuclear, this here, most than 20 gigawatts gone. We're phasing out coal, 40 gigawatts left nowadays, at latest 38 and aimed by this government by 2030. So we entirely rely on renewables. Now let me come to India. If tiny Germany can do it, big India can do it for sure. Here you can see solar days, integration into the grid, not some hypothetical data, actual data. And as you can see in the upper bar, every single day in India, you have solar. Look at Germany, medium part here. How poor we're doing in winter time. Same for wind. India is doing in wind very well. And on top, we have a lot of wind on top in June and July. And if you go into an hourly case, you will be surprised how well wind and solar are matching each other. And then let's come to cost. These are some general LCOIs and you see always, India on the very left, here somewhere in the middle, but doing extremely well on cost. So it's a major cost advantage in India already. I ask an intern to scan the merit India publicly available data on what is the merit order coal generation cost in India last month. And this is actual data, actually paid if the data in that webpage is correct. And what you can see, this is six rupees, this is four rupees and you have on the worst thing, even something between above 12 rupees. If you do the same on AES, more or less the same figure, so it's four, six rupees up here. So existing coal-fired power plants cost at the end far more than six rupees already. Many are costing significantly more than four. So consider solar you get for nowadays 2.4 and below, wind you get for less than three rupees. Why wait? It's half the price of existing coal and I'm not talking about new coal. Set this light, what are the real cost for handling fluctuating AI integration options in India? And we're normally talking in very many instances on chemical storage up here, top right. Yes, might be coming up in the future, but please first do all the other things. Do grid codes, AI forecasting, sub-hourly scheduling and dispatch, going to the market design and then do load shifting, starting from agricultural demand, INC demand response, residential demands response, then go for coal ramping. Yes, something is happening there and we are fine to ramp down from 55% to 50 to 40. In Germany, we're doing by the market driven hard coal, less than 10%. So this is technically feasible, economically, if the market is designed properly. And at the very end, come up with battery, yes, batteries prices will come down, so this will be most likely the best option for India in the future and considering all these things first. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for this very prompt, very efficient Dr. Damm. So ladies and gentlemen, I cannot say that we will not take a question, so I will ask anybody in the audience for one question. Left side, anybody? No. Center? No. Right side? No. Okay. So I will ask one question to Dr. Damm. Yes, Dr. Damm, so you showed how the, you know, the percentage of fossil which is there in India and that is there in Germany and you know the plans of the Indian energy, how we are planning to change. So do you think a lot of investment is needed other than the source of energy, but you know, other things, ancillaries to make sure that we can have a higher share of unpredictable green power?
Sure. In Germany, we have already around 50% of the entire electricity demand be covered by renewables, 50%. In India, it's about 12%, something like this. So it can be easy ramped up significantly already now. I showed in this slide what all are the measures. And if you take up the Indian goal of 500 gigawatts, when you do the calculation, these 500 gigawatts will only cover the increased electricity demand in a kind of business as usual scenario. It's not covering green hydrogen, it's not covering a significant shift in other sectors. So if you take 500 gigawatts, the dark 175 given, around 350 divided by 78, you roughly around 50 gigawatts required every year of renewable additions. If you take into account source 5 million or 10 million tons of green hydrogen, one kilogram requires about 50 units, so 10 million times 50 requires another 500 terawatt hours. The weight is about 1500, so you easily adding another 300 gigawatts of demand. The weight again by 78 years, so we're again back to about 100 gigawatts required of renewable additions every year from now on in India. 100 gigawatts sounds a lot, isn't it? Look at China, they're doing it. Do we have a problem with, let's say, variable renewables? Of course we have. Can it be managed? Of course it can be done. And I try to explain how it's big done. It's not a single silver bullet, you have to do all those things.
Thank you so much, Dr. Damm. And with this, we come to the close of this special session. Thank you so much to all the panelists. Over to you.
Thank you, sir. Now I would request Mr. Robert from Siemens to come over stage and provide a momento to our speakers. To Miss Preeti Bhattnagar. To Miss Priti Bhatnagar. To Dr. Winfried Damm. To Mr. Matthew Rowe. So we have a group photograph, please.